Yes. All right, it's 7:30. I'm going to call the meeting order. Roll call. William Johnston.
Here.
Tom Graffanino.
Here.
Lynn Colligan.
Here.
Lisa Crackler.
Here.
Phil Diorio, I'm here. And also present, we have Stephen Kiley, Town Attorney. The first order of business is to review and approve the November 16th, 2022 minutes. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. The minutes are approved. The first order of business, we have, I'm going to go back to an application. We had a work session. Continue that work session right now. The application was 78 North Cartwright Road. There was some discussion about whether or not we should fire the requested pool house to be moved in from the property lines. I spoke to Reed Cairn briefly. He's going to get me an actual distance number. He did not have on hand. But the question is, I know, Tom, you wanted to look.
I looked, yeah.
I can go either way on this one, so I don't know if any of you have changed your minds or have a feeling one way or the other.
I'm sort of feeling like you, not as decisive as I normally feel. So if anybody's feeling very strongly opinionated on it.
Punch.
I had no problem with it in the beginning, but I keep thinking about it. I strongly think he should move it or something.
Okay.
A few feet or something. Not just since it's a tear down.
Mm-hmm. What about you, Tom? Did you?
I did. And the one thing that came up in the conversation last week was the vista from the main. And you struck a nerve. You hit it nail on the head saying that, well, that's really not our decision to make. And so I just want to take a look and see. And I do believe it could come over. I'm with Punch. I just didn't think there has to be some, a little bit of movement there.
Okay. So my suggestion, if everybody feels like that that's the road that we'd like to go down, I'd like to table this till our next work session. We'll have a number from Reed and we can kind of sort of figure out what type of relief we do want to grant on this. As opposed to asking them to come back and reopen the hearing, we can grant alternate relief. That's correct, Stephen?
Yes.
Is everybody good with that?
Yep.
So just so you know, like going forward, you could always grant less than what's asked for. You can grant something above it, yeah, because it wasn't noticed.
Right, that is sort of the minimum necessary. Okay. All right. So next order of business, we have a resolution on 568 Cartwright Road. Christina?
This is application by James and Cheryl Keller. This is abbreviated version of the resolution. Basis of the application is a request for a variance from the town code section 133-10B5B to renovate an existing home to include second story addition on the west side of the same along with first floor addition at the southeast corner. The demolition of an existing deck on the south side of the subject dwelling and add new decks to the same, as shown on the Sherman Engineering and PA site, site plan dated August 25, 2022. Additionally, special permits are required pursuant to town code section 133-23A for the increase of nonconformity and the consequential bulk intrusion created by the proposed first floor addition and decking. The applicant requests two area variances and two special permits in connection with a proposed renovation. The zoning board of appeals held public hearings on this application in November 16, 2022, at which time written and oral evidence were presented. The resolution of the board is to approve the request for two area variances for front yard setback relief of 1.3 feet and 1.6 feet respectively for the subject addition, as well as the special permits for same, as reflected in the Sherman Engineering and Consulting Site Plan dated August 25, 2022.
We're going to do a roll call vote on this.
Somebody should make a motion.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
William Johnston?
Yes.
Tom Graffanino?
Yes.
Lynn Colligan?
Yes.
Lisa Crackler?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Then we're going to go on to the special permits, Christina.
It's the one resolution. It's fine.
Okay. The one resolution takes care of it. Okay, thank you. All right. Our next order is new application, 71B North Parkway. That's Fourthwick. Matt, are you here to present for them?
A hearing on the application of Blair and John Borthwick, owners of 71B North Parkway, Shelter Island, New York, which is located in zone AA, reverting to A nearshore overlay district. It is more specifically described on the Suffolk County tax map as 700-13-1-7. The applicant is seeking variances from Shelter Island Town Code section 133-65-1, 2, and 3 for the following relief. To hold a four feet side yard setback where 25 is required for pool equipment. To hold a four feet side yard setback where 20 is required for a proposed pool house with sleeping quarters. And to hold zero side yard setback for a proposed swimming pool with attached patio where 20 is required. The applicant is also seeking a variance, Shelter Island Town Code section 133-12F1 and 2A and B, to locate a proposed pool house, pool and attached patio within the required nearshore and peninsula overlay, 75 feet shoreline vegetative buffer.
Good evening.
Matt Sherman, Sherman Engineering Consultant. I'm here on behalf of Borthwick. Property Yards. Am I able to share my screen? This property is, I got a real quick presentation to kind of give you a quick rundown of what it is we're looking to do with the site. Try and, with the iPad instead of the computer, which may take me a second to get it running. Just a real quick. You came in with a backup knowing that this might be a problem. Okay. This property, it's 0.6 acres, North from Parkway, just south of North from Parkway off of Rocky Point Terrace, which is a little bit of an offshoot. It's just to the south of Kissing Rock and Camp Quinte Pet. There's a handful of small residential properties there. Further to the south of this one, you've got the Fowler property running down further to the south and southeast. Right now, the property as it currently exists is a we've got the single family dwelling up by the road. There's a small patio just to the south of it. I'll call the water the south side and Rocky Point Terrace the north side, just for simplicity's sake. So you've got a small terrace to the south of the dwelling. And then as you go further to the south, closer to the bulkhead, you've got an existing grandfathered-in pool house with plumbing inside it, bathroom inside it. You've got a shed, you've got the pool equipment, and then you've got the in-ground pool just to the inside of that existing pool house. These are all pre-existing. The pool house, the patio, pool equipment, the shed, all those things are pre-existing, non-conforming to the current zoning code. The proposed plan that we're looking to do is we're not reducing the nonconformity of the pool house or the shed or the patio. But what we are doing is we're doing significant upgrades. We're replacing those buildings. So everything goes away, we build new. We're doing significant upgrades to those buildings and to the other site facilities. That's mitigation for allowing them to reconfigure the pre-existing non-conforming buildings, not reduce their nonconformity at all, but significantly decrease the site's impact. Right now, there's a conventional septic system that's just to the water side of the house. If this project gets approved, we'll replace that with an IA septic system. Also, we've got a, there's no automatic cover on the existing swimming pool. So an automatic cover would go on the new swimming pool, stormwater drainage, the updated pool equipment, so cartridge filters, better disinfection, things along those lines. So even though we're not reducing the nonconformity with the new construction, we are significantly improving the overall site because of the other things that we're able to do in association with the new construction. The existing plan, excuse me, the existing and proposed plans, the overlay, you've got there's a zoomed-in version where you can see that the existing shed is about two feet off of the property line. That's shown in blue. Color might not be, may not pop out. What's that? I'll come around here. See if I can get this on here. The, so this, it's jumpy. That square there, that is the existing shed. It's from two to 2.1 feet off of the property line. The new shed moves down to the south, to the side a little bit, so it's four feet off the property line. So it's a little bit more, but not appreciably so. The new shed gets larger because down here on the water side of everything, the pool equipment, that gets removed from that location and gets put in that new shed. So you've got the pool equipment comes out of that area. That's right now, it's about four and a half feet, five feet off of the property line. It comes up to be included in the shed. The the existing pool house is that rectangle there. And it is right now between 4.3 and 4.4 feet off of the property line. The new pool house is slightly longer, excuse me, is slightly shorter and slightly narrower than the existing. So the new one is a slightly smaller footprint within that adjacent, within that side yard area. And it goes to about four feet off of the property line. So it gets slightly closer to the property line. It lines up with the proposed shed. The patio gets increased. This area here, that's between the new area swimming pool and the new shed. That's not patio right now. I can show you a photograph here in a second. So that area there all becomes patio. So that's all new patio on that house side of the pool and shed and the area between the shed and the new pool, the extension to the pool. So this is a rendering of it with their, the Borthlicks also own the property that's adjacent to this. And they just built that house. It's on the backside of this proposed pool house and shed. So this is the pool house area here. There's an open area between that and then this is the shed. So if you were standing in the yard looking at the pool, that would be here in front. And you'd have the pool house behind it and then their house on the neighboring property on the backside. So this is in that neighboring house looking down at the pool house in front of them. The property drops away, so it's actually down and in front. So it looks like it's a much lower building from that neighboring property. Another isometric view, just to kind of show you the relationship. The property line is basically runs right along this set of steps. Right there. Side view, looking up. If you were like standing at the bulkhead, looking up at the pool house and the swimming pool right there in front of you, the house at 71B is up there behind in the distance. And it's a photograph. This is the existing pool house and shed with the new house behind it on the adjacent property. Looking from the bulkhead, looking up that pool house. The new pool, this pool house here, that eve is at about eight feet. A little bit shy, like maybe seven, seven foot, eight inch. And then the ridge is at about 10 feet. The new house is going to have a flat roof and that flat roof is at about nine and a half feet above. So the height of the new building, I shouldn't say house, pool house, the height of the new pool house is going to be slightly less than the height of the existing one. And this is in relation to the yard itself. So the improvements could be moved to the middle of the yard. So there are other options than, rather than just rebuilding them in place and in kind. However, moving them into the middle of the property destroys the view. And I know that the board doesn't, it really doesn't take views into account. But the reasoning why the owners don't want to move it into the middle of the property is because of that. They want it to look like it's a natural viewscape in front of the house with the lawn. So if they do have to move it into the middle, they'll just leave it where it is and keep status quo. And then just a little bit closer up of a view of the swimming pool, then the pool house behind it and then the neighboring, the neighboring house behind that. Close up of the shed. It's just a small storage shed. Again, that's going to be made larger because of the pool equipment, which is here on the left-hand side of the pool house. It's going out of that area and it's being put inside the new shed, which is the reasoning again for the larger footprint for that new building. So that's pretty much what I have. If the board has any questions for me, I'll be more than happy to answer them. You know, this is, it's not a terribly complex project. It is very, very similar to the one you guys had just discussed. You know, having the accessory building within the side yard setback, grandfathered in old. The difference with this one as opposed to that is we're not changing the use. It's already a pool house with interior plumbing. It's perfectly legal, pre-existing, non-conforming as to location, as to use. So that, I think, makes a significant difference. Also, the fact that we're not talking about making a bigger, taller building. This building is actually going to be made slightly smaller. So we're going in opposite direction. So, you know, I understand that there are some parallels, but there are some significant differences.
I mean, Matt, I could understand, you know, you would do, let's say, perhaps want them building in the middle of the yard. But certainly you could slide the pool over, slide everything over without really lot messing up the viewscape very much. I mean, they'd have to look at their pool, but I think it's probably not that much of a hardship.
Because then it would become conforming, would it not, if it's in the center of the?
I don't know if we're going to get enough to get quite conforming there. Conforming, the property on that is about 90 feet and change. So you could slide it in.
I'd have to look at it and see if we can, if we can slide it in enough to make everything conforming and still have the aesthetic that they're looking for. You know, have that view that they're looking for. And I can certainly go to the owners with anything that the board feels is reasonable and see if they're willing to consider that by all means. And I can run a couple of different options of sliding everything into completely conforming locations, which I had proposed to them initially before we even got to this stage, which they felt that was putting everything right in the middle of the property, which they did not want. But if there is some kind of a middle ground compromise.
So this, the other thing we have to consider, when you look at the contour lines, the 75 and the 100 feet from the wetland, even though that's not our building starts with that end, it's going to get further into the wetlands.
And actually, if you've got all that in front of you, I can, let me pull this back up. Can I share?
I mean, it could be pushed up the hill a little bit as well.
You're right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to pull my screen back up because I can benefit of people who are watching really here.
Yeah, you could draw close of that. The house up.
I mean, you don't want to, again, put it right at the house, but to but to move it in and move it up, it keeps it, it keeps it out of the wetlands, keeps it out of the setback a little further, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The wetland setback comes in and kind of arches across toward the house. So, you know, fortunately, it's a bulkhead, so we know that that setback isn't going anywhere. So that's good. We don't have to worry about it encroaching, coming any closer into the property. The
That's the 100-foot mark.
That's the 100-foot, yeah. Here's the 75. Yeah, there's 75 there. So let me see if I got one with both. Yeah, here we go. Yeah, so this is the 75-foot setback line here. And then this is the 100-foot setback. So if we slid everything to the south, you're getting more of the swimming pool in that 75-foot setback, which we can't do. The town, the town board is very firm, not allowing new construction within that first 75 feet. But if we slid it to the south and to the, and up toward the house a little bit, we may be able to come with a resolution that doesn't run afoul of what the town board would approve in the wetlands end, but also gives the ZBA some relief on that side yard.
I feel like maybe we should
At the right time. I'm the neighbor, Alexander Doeman. I'd like to make a couple of comments if I could.
Christina? For, from my perspective, I'd like to hear sort of what mitigation your clients might be willing to consider. And I think perhaps the best for us is to keep this open and see what you could come back with and whatever. Christina, we could put them on the January calendar. Is that right?
Matt, you were talking about the mitigation provided by the stormwater drainage and the, I'm sorry, the septic, the IA septic. But the automatic cover in the pool equipment, you had grouped under mitigation. Can you explain that?
Yeah. The town code does not require an automatic cover on a swimming pool as an actual codified requirement. For any swimming pool that the town board looks at that has a wetlands permit requirement, it's almost, it's really a default. We always go to an automatic cover because we understand really by association with the area that these pools are in, shallow groundwater areas, sensitive groundwater areas. So we offer up an automatic cover as additional mitigation so that you're not losing as much water to evaporation. You can reduce evaporation loss by 90% if you got an automatic cover and they use it reasonably. So if you're not losing as much to evaporation, you're not topping it off as much. Town code prohibits filling swimming pools from groundwater, but you can top them off from groundwater. So anything we can do to limit the amount of water that's required to top off, so the less, the less impact there is on the immediate aquifer in the area is always a, it's always a preferred thing.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Okay.
Okay, I was going to say, anybody else have any?
What's the distance between the proposed pool house and the swimming pool?
It's I'll have to get you an exact distance, but it's, from the pool house itself, I'm going to say it's about 14 feet.
Okay.
But I'll get you an exact distance, yeah.
Anyone else have any other questions? If not, we'll open up the floor to Zoom land, I think. All right, Christina, can we, I think Mr. Doeman wanted to ask a question or make a statement.
Please, yeah, thank you. I guess I'm not on video camera, but you can hear me. That's, okay, all right. I'll start my video. Okay. Hi, good afternoon. Thank you. Yeah, I'm Alexander Doeman. I have the property, I'm in the one of those adjacent to the new house under construction. So I'm 100 feet away from the property line. I had, you know, I looked at the application very carefully and have some comments that I'd like to share. And first comment is, I noticed on the application, it said that the application was, had a different zone than what was on the letter of denial. The letter of denial described the zone as AA revert to A nearshore overlay district with a separate set of zoning requirements than just AA revert to A. So the denial letter, that was not mentioned on the application. The denial letter referenced the zone in the zoning code 133 section, well, chapter 12. Because the, the existing, where the plan encroaches not just on the 100-foot line, but the well within the 75-foot line. So I thought that that should be, that should be emphasized. And I understand that there is a pre-existing house there, I mean, not a structure, that, but, but this is not a reconstruction as listed on the, on the application. And per the denial letter, this is a demolition of the existing structures and, and new construction. So it's really, when you look at where things go, you can look, you really can, my propose, you look at it sort of de novo and is there a more appropriate place for the swimming pool? And, and the pool house is a slightly different subject than the pool. And I understand everyone wants to have a pool, but this pool that's proposed has, is double the square footage of the existing pool. The existing pool is 38 feet long by 16 feet or a total of 625 square feet. And the, the new pool, looking at the perimeter, is double the square, the square footage. So the new pool has 1,200 square feet. And, you know, so I would propose that the pool shouldn't be any, since it's already a non-conforming area, both, and in particular with respect to the the 133-12 area, because it's a nearshore district. I would propose that the pool would be, should be no bigger and so that it can be more easily put in a conforming area, not just with respect to the side yard, but with respect to the, at least the 75 or 75-foot.
Mr. Doeman, can I, can I lay in on this for just a second here? They are not here before us for a wetlands permit. The pool right now, the proposed pool, is not within the setback and within the side yard setback. And that's really the issue that we are involved with is the setback variance, the area variance. And so the main thing for us on this is the location of the pool house and the shed. Those are the two items that are actually proposed to be located in the setback that are sort of our bailiwick here.
I, I, no, I thank you for explaining that. I guess I was focused on the, on the I guess I was focused on the, on the, there was a zoning code that, because of the nearshore, that puts the seventy-five and hundred foot into play. That was referenced in the denial letter. And so I thought it was also within your purview to grant variances with respect to the, because of the nearshore district.
No, so, so that, that is the work of the town board. They, they handle all the wetlands permits.
Okay, with respect to the side yard issues, I have the following comments there. The, the, the non-conforming area within the side yard setback is increased because the patio, that the patio square footage has gone from six hundred twenty-five square feet to twelve hundred, to sixteen hundred square, it's listed as sixteen hundred twenty-five square feet, the patio, which is an appertemont, is the French word, because it's attached to the swimming pool. And so, so where had been six hundred twenty-five, it's now one thousand six hundred twenty-five. And I don't see any reason why, why, you know, why the, the encroached or the non-conforming area should be, why the patio has to be increased, you know, commensurately more than it already was, that's number one. Number two, the the, as far as the pool house goes, besides the fact that, that it's within, with the new pool house would be within the seventy-five foot area, which we should all hope to avoid, it's also well within the, the, the side yard setback. The way it's structured presently, it is, it abuts the property line. Whereas the pre-existing pool house, yes, it was very close to the property line, but it, but it was about, there was a gravel area, so it was about, my guess is maybe two feet from the property line. But more, more importantly than, than even the two feet issue is, if you're going to put a new, new pool house up, one, can one, one could easily, look, I guess the, the importance, you know, this is a small lot, it's point seven acre lot. Having a pool house is the type of structure that is not an essential item. That is, you could put, you could put a new pool up without having a new pool house. There, there already is an existing house there, it's a, it's a point seven acre lot. And there's an eight thousand square foot, you know, or seven thousand square foot house, new house going up, that's just on the other side of the property line, that, that is already easily accessible. It feels like the pool house is really redundant with this, in terms of a necessity. And, and if it can be, you don't have to have a pool house. If they want to have a pool house, it should be in a, in a, there's no reason it can't be put in an area, at least that's conforming. And so I, that's my comment about, about the pool house. I, my, the other concern is the overall, the overall square footage of the project. When you add the, the patio and the doubling the size of the swimming pool, and, and is that it's, it's a much larger project scope than the existing scope. And it's more manageable to place it in a conforming area if the, if, if the structures are the same size as they are, as they are presently. That's, let me see if there's one other comment I might make. Oh, there's something, it was issue about the floodplain on the application.
Again, that's, that's not in our bailiwick, Mr. Domon.
The, the floodplain issue that?
No, it's, yeah, we're, we're here for a side yard variance.
All right, the, the floodplain went up, came up on the application, that's why I was, I was addressing it. If, if it was put in a conforming area, the floodplain would be more favorable because it would be moved higher up in floodplain X. Does that, that doesn't make any difference?
I, we, certainly, Mr. Domon, you know, we are going to try to get some get this building positioned in a way that's going to hopefully make everybody happy, including the ZBA, perhaps even you.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I mean, I guess, I, my feeling is, I had, I don't have a problem with, you know, with the existing, you know, the, what, what's there is there in terms of the, the pool house now. But if you're going to, if you're going to put a new pool, you know, demolish everything and now want to put a new pool house, it should be, it should either be in existing, in a conforming area or, or, or since it's not essential, it doesn't have to go up at all. That would be more attractive than, than having a compound of, of multiple houses and a pool house and, and an accessory structure as well.
You've stated that, Mr. Domon, and we understand that. You've stated that, and we understand your point of view on that, thank you.
Oh, okay. All right, I just wanted, I just wanted to share my, my comments on that.
Oh, we appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
Can I add a real quick clarification, just a couple of things that Mr. Domon had mentioned?
Sure.
Okay, and I don't want to, I'm not going to go through all the points. I mean, he had some very good points, but just to clarify, the overall site coverage that he had mentioned, currently it's twenty-two percent of the lot size. Five thousand five hundred and seventeen square feet is the overall site coverage, all the buildings, patios, swimming pool, everything else. So it's going from twenty-two percent to twenty-seven percent. A town code allows up to forty percent. So it is an increase, I believe it's not an appreciable increase. And it is still well with, well below the, the maximum on the flood zone issue. The pool itself is within that flood zone, the buildings are not. So, you know, that is something that was taken into consideration when looking at the overall site plan. And it is, you know, certainly, it's, as you said, not in the ZBA's venue, it will be with the town board. But those are some of the things that did come into play when you were looking.
And those things, you know, when you're talking to your clients, you know, if they're willing to push this up the hill a little bit, it gets, it gets them, whatever, some, some real mileage in terms of getting that stuff moved away from the floodplain, from the wetlands.
Yeah, you can't, you can get it a little away from the wetlands, you can't get it out of the floodplain. That whole, that whole lower part of the property,
Okay.
it's always in the flood zone. There's, there's just nothing you could do
Okay.
and get out of that. Thank you.
Is there anybody else here who would like to weigh in on this application?
Can I just make one, just one follow-up comment?
Sure.
On the, the patio, you know, the, the non-conforming area within the side, the side yard setback, which is your, your purview, is, is increased by this patio. It's, it's not just, you know, how much lot coverage we're talking about. We're talking about the, the square footage area within the, the side yard setback.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, is, is increased by this patio and
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I just, I want to think, I think that should be emphasized. I don't see any reason that it should be increased. Or, or, or really, you know, like, there's no reason that, that has to be there at all.
Is there anybody else out in Zoom land that would like to weigh in on this? No, all right, so we're going to table this until our next hearing date in January. I think that is the November twenty fifth of January.
Do you see deadlines to put on, start out ten days prior?
We're leaving it open, so.
Okay, so I didn't know if you wanted to get information, so you had a chance to look at it.
I mean, that would be great, just, that would help the process along.
Okay.
And also, it's really, Matt, it would probably be best if it is at least a week before. That way, if there is stuff that we want to get posted on the town website, that people would have access to as well.
Okay.
All right?
And what was the date of the?
Hearing's open, so correspondence can be.
The date for the next hearing?
Oh, January.
Confident to be there?
January twenty-fifth. I hope.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
I don't know how to do the computer stuff. Well, I, I
If I can just shift to the side, there is a microphone. It's not to the voice. You can come from the other side.
Want to put the podium back?
Yes, I need a podium.
Sorry, get the podium or the tripod.
It's tough. I don't have a fancy computer.
Will you state your name for the board, please?
Yes, my name is Kieran Payton Murphy.
First things first.
We have to read it.
We have to, Christina, next order of business is the application for eighty-five Shore Road. Christina, will you read the announcement?
Hearing on the application of Ricardo Campos, architect of Bootyell, CEO of Michael Ebel, owner of eighty-five Shore Road, Shelter Island, New York, which is on AA reverting to A nearshore overlay district. And it's more specifically described on the Suffolk County tax map at seven hundred dash thirteen dash one dash eighteen. The applicant is seeking a variance from Shelter Island Code, Section one thirty-three, section five, B. The following is the thirty-five feet from the R setback for the proposed for an entry vestibule where forty is required. The applicant is also seeking a variance from Shelter Island Town Code, Section one thirty-three dash six, B five, B two, to hold the fifteen feet side year setback for proposed pool patio where twenty is required. There was a correspondence from the adjacent neighbor, Marilyn Derby, eighty-nine Shore Road. Opposing variances and special permit requests, we ask that the zoning board enforce the code in place to preserve the natural scenic and historic values and the character of our property and surrounding environment. I am extremely concerned that any variance to the stated decreed setback in Zone A would encroach on my family's use and quiet enjoyment of our property. In reviewing the plans attached to the application, it appears there is ample room on the opposite side of the structure. Also considering the ladder foot frame or the proposed construction, a slight reduction in overall size of the structure or just shift away from our property are reasonable. And they also addressed the special permit, which outside of the ZBA purview.
Good evening, I'm Kieran Payton Murphy, I'm the attorney, and I'm representing the applicant which is owned by Michael Evil. I'm of counsel with the law firm, Burton Sullivan, in Forty-One Huthen House Lane, South Carolina, New York. This property, I'm here for two variances. And there's a denial letter wetlands, which will be another, another board. I think I'm a ten board for that, and also for the side structural, I know we'd have to go to that. So I'm here tonight for two small variances. We did give them a privilege, if you could deliver Marilyn Derby, which voiced her concerns about if you look at the small section of the, the three point six of the console. On the left, there is an infinity pool, which is supposed to be twenty feet. And we're asking for a fifteen feet side yard, and you have two stones. Where the building inspector interpreted it is that it's, the pool is twenty-nine point three inches. But the patio
Twenty-nine point three inches?
Away from the
Twenty-nine feet.
Twenty-nine feet.
Twenty-nine feet, sorry. A couple of degrees. And the, but the patio, the, the building inspector looks at the patio of that impact. So that is supposed to be twenty feet, and it's fifteen. So that's a twenty-five percent reduction we're asking for. This is on the hill. I have a, I took a picture of the neighbor's house. And also, this property is very steep, Shore Road, you're really building on the top area of it. I actually had another project by a former owner, did one, I did not do the second project, but the first one back in two thousand and twelve. So I'm kind of familiar with this, but anyhow, the our applicant, the owner, is willing to put up native, like, abreviations, native abreviations as like the block to be up to this pool. In fact, he's going to use all new vegetation, he's going to have no lawn on this property as, as possible mitigation for the neighbor. And, you know, moving on to the kind of the five factors of the ZBA, this is not, the, you know, the first one is undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. Right next door is the Pringle Hotel, which has about twenty thousand FSEPA. It's on seven point five acres, we're on three point five acres. The neighbor to the north northwest, the one that's Darwin's property, that's either eight, eighteen hundred SFPA. And the one next to that is about fifteen forty-six FSEPA. Now, on Rocky Point, that's behind, on top of it, there is a, a forty-five point one acre property behind it. Shore Road has, has a restaurant hotel on it. It has the Perlman Music School, it has a Pringle. So the character of the neighborhood is diverse. And it is, this will sit on the top, on the back, the furthest away, if somebody walking on Shore Road, you know, this is going to be further away, it's setback. I wanted to point out that the previous approval by this developer, Zach Vela, which I was not involved in that particular project, but he had gotten approval for twelve thousand two hundred and forty square feet with three stories. This particular building here, if you look at it, it's got three, you know, it's more of a, you know, kind of a conservative bar development. Actually, and this will be at the town board letter, but just for character of the neighborhood, it's, the basement is going to be, which is really this ground level area, is going to be two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight square feet approximately. And then there's a separate garage, which is about eighteen hundred seventeen square feet. So when you deduct that from the overall, what's being presented is ten thousand one hundred and twelve square feet, you're ending up with about six thousand twenty-seven square feet that you'll see from Shore Road. Because if you look, this is, this is facing Rocky Point, and this is where we're asking for the other five feet, that's the vestibule, it should be forty feet, it's thirty-five feet. So it's just this small area, it's about, I think, sixty square feet, that's the
What's the height of that vestibule?
I'll have to find that.
Okay.
I mean, it's less than the, this meets the pyramid, so.
Right, just, just curious, because we're, you know, that's what's going to go in the setback, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Have to get that right. Sorry, the architect, he's not well here come today. And anyhow, so this is broken up, you can see, like, because it's very steep, the basement kind of open area is, is down below, and it's broken up. The building with the connections. So getting back to you know, whether it could be some other method, you really can't put it, you look at the survey, it's very steep. And I've had to walk up, I walked up there. Fall down. It's a very steep area, and there is a, you know, there's a question about, there's a pond and pool. And the previous approval, the New York, New York's, the D E C said that gave a non-jurisdiction letter, which we probably don't give again that pool area. And also, it's on a road, it's on Shore Road, so that blocks off the, the water. And then, again, this is, this is substantial. Again, we're asking five feet for the full patio, which will be previous. And maybe with, with all, you know, the native trees that are equivalent.
So I, I have a question about that five feet, about the patio. So if can you just make the patio smaller?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
That's something-
For me, I'm just curious, because you're starting with a clean palette here, right?
Right.
And why intrude on the neighbor's space? I, I don't-
Okay, so I have authority to give it up.
Okay, the, you know, the-
If I get the other one, huh?
The front, the front-
As mitigation for the front one.
Really not that bothered by. The side yard thing, I am-
I'm interested.
Just at first, blocked by-
Yeah, we talked about that, and I talked to the owner today. He wants to be a good neighbor, and yes, he can cut the five feet. So, you know, I can, I can draw that.
Okay.
It just looks like this is, this is an opportunity where it can be more conforming very easily.
I said, the architect's idea is, okay, no, so I, you know, I did that. The creative design, we're, yes, we're willing to give that five feet up. As mitigation to maybe the five foot, it's supposed to be 40-
As mitigation for what never was, or?
No, I know, it's a clean site, you're right, a clean slate, so, so that's the thing, so, and we still have, you know, it's a long term, we still have to get Wetlands-
Yeah, like, this is-
-a board, this is the big thing.
This is, this is just a little nibble.
Yeah, so that's the thing. I wanted you to see the design, because I know the previous one was-
Okay, so, does anybody here have any other questions? I would like to know the height of the vestibule. And if we're going to close this tonight, I would like to get some sort of a commitment for an adjusted plan that shows the patio smaller before we have our work session. Right, I mean, that's a legit thing, Stephen, right?
Yeah, or, you know, whatever approval subject to a survey being sent that shows the-
Right, I mean, I'd like to see it before the work session.
No, no, no doubt.
Makes sense.
Okay, so how is it, I'm sorry, here you would have a work session and then?
So, yeah, we'll have a work session of the January 18th.
Okay.
And we would like to have this submitted a week before that, January 11th. A revised plan, I mean, that's, you don't have to redo the whole plan, it's just taking off a little something on the one side.
Right.
And, and if we could also receive by then-
The height of it.
Like, some, some sort of elevation of that whole side of the house there.
What do you mean, the whole side?
Yeah, just so we could, yeah, a little elevation, a drawn elevation, where you kind of see the whole thing.
Yeah, you seem to have provided a certain elevation here, but not, but not that one.
Nope. Yeah, okay, so the-
And may I say, the drawings are a little small. We should have one set, like, more. Do you have one set? All right. So some of these numbers you need without a magnifying glass.
That's why I kind of asked for the whole.
You're right, yeah, that is.
Okay, so, so we have a, I don't know, the neighbor.
Yeah, no, we're not at that point yet, you have to let-
Okay. Does anybody else here have any other questions? Okay, so I'm just going to ask if anybody in Zoom land has any questions.
I don't know if you can hear me, my name is Douglas Knight, and I'm the trustee of the Knight Family Trust.
You hear?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I wasn't sure if you're opening up the hearing for public testimony now, it seems to be rather relaxed, and I'm okay with that relaxed format, but is there an opportunity for those that are in opposition to actually present, or?
Sure, absolutely.
I guess I should ask if you received my letter that I addressed to the chair with subsequent and additional copies to the, to the board.
It true? I didn't.
Yes, did he not send it to you?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
That's right, I'd like your copy.
But the board has been in receipt of that, I didn't hear.
Yes, but apparently it's not part of the public record yet, because you did not submit it to the clerk.
Oh, I wasn't aware that, that that was a necessity, I thought just sending it to the chair, as we do in our community, is communication enough.
Okay.
Especially since the letter requested it be written or read into the record. So I guess if you're asking for testimony now, I'm prepared to give that, most of it would just be a regurgitation of my letter. But in general, and in summary-
They just give us a dress for the record, so you could have a frame of reference.
Yes, thank you so much, yes, my name is Douglas G. Knight, for the record, I'm the trustee of the Knight Family Trust, formerly the Becker Appointment Trust. We own property at 39 Nostrom Parkway, as well as 59 Nostrom Parkway, and specifically for Belvedere on the 45.1 acres that the attorney for the applicant mentioned. We reside directly across Rocky Point Road to the southwest. And she is correct in her description of a prior submittal for variance for a garage at 85 Shore Road, which was denied, I guess I would like to think as a result of testimony that we previously gave. We're very concerned about the project and its proximity to the upper slope of Rocky Point Road, specifically if the variance were to be awarded, it would, in fact, well, I guess, force the host house to be located five feet closer to Rocky Point than really is necessary. The reason we're concerned about that is that we've made a conscientious and conscious effort to protect and preserve what is one of the larger open space wooded parcels on Shelter Island. And the closer proximity of that development to that natural land is a concern naturally. Especially given the light that the imposition that the applicant would declare as rationale for a wardens of these variances is wholly self-created. I'm an architectural engineer, having designed both commercial as well as residential projects, and I can tell you from experience that the project is easily accommodated without any awareness, a wardens of variances in any manner whatsoever. By rotating the aspect of the house a few degrees, they can easily accommodate the portico and/or entry as described with no front yard variance needed whatsoever. Shifting of the house slightly to the southeast, for example, accomplishes a similar relaxed siding of the pool appurtenances and that patio structure that's a part of the construction further to the south, not allowing or not, not requiring rather any variance whatsoever to the, to the neighbor property that also fronts onto Rocky Point Road. More importantly, by shrinking the size of the project and the patio areas, the project can be accommodated not only within the front and side yard setbacks, but also the required 75-foot shoreline or shore buffer. This is important because, as an engineer, the retaining wall structure by steel of over 700 feet of lineal length are going to be a significant detriment to the, the wetlands that reside below, especially as currently sited within feet of that 75-foot buffer. The segmental retaining wall construction that they're proposing will not accommodate the swimming pool lateral equivalent fluid pressures and surcharge as designed. You're going to need something quite a bit more substantial, which comes in the form of either concrete caissons or actual reinforced concrete retaining walls with spread footings. And that construction will be, as I said, a significant impact to the lower, especially because of the slope into the lower shoreline area, shoreline buffer, the area surrounding the pond. So I guess to summarize, we just feel that, and I'll read from my letter now, the applicant's request for variance for side yard and front yard setback relief should be denied. These and other variance requests are self-created and result in a significant adverse physical and environmental effect. These effects can be easily avoided by implementing the subtle adjustments I've suggested herein, all which would make the design more sensitive and respectful. And these simple design changes would eliminate the requirement for any variances at all. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate you having me testify.
Thank you, thank you. Christina, I will forward you those slides, if I thought that they were- Is there anyone else out there in Zoom land that would like to comment?
Yes, we would, we're-
I'm Marilyn Derby, and I'm the owner of the property at 89 Shore Road. This is my son, Peter, who is managing in proper, property for me at this point in time. We would like to add input to what is-
Very good, thank you.
Excuse me?
Very good, please do.
Go ahead, Pete.
No, so I, we submitted the letter, and I just, you know, just to highlight the points and to touch on a little bit of what Mr. Knight said is, you know, we're extremely opposed to this because we're looking at a blank slate, and we don't understand how, you know, when there's no existing structure, that it needs to be, you know, worked around, how we can't, how they can't figure out to put the plans in, into the existing code. So that, that's mainly, you know, where we are, the setbacks, you know, when, when it was a zone double A, it was 30 feet, with, you know, reverting to Zone A, it's 20 feet, and now they're asking for, you know, five more feet. And, you know, I know we've already touched on that, and that's, I, it sounded like that had, had been taken away, but we just wanted to, you know, put our, our opposition on record.
Very good, thank you.
I don't know whether members of the board have been down that road, Rocky Point Road. And it is a dark road, but it is a road. And, you know, even the setback from the road is going to be unbelievable, going to get cars down there. There's basically four houses on that road. There's an end house, there's our home, there was that structure that was demolished, and then at the very end was Dick Petrie's place at the very end of the road. So definitely the setback from our property, that's the master bedroom on that side of the house, to have a swimming pool that's going to have a waterfall and everything else, like almost right outside my window. It definitely would impact our quality of time there. We have been, we stated in the letter, you know, we've been there 90 years, we're the fourth and fifth generation up there. And we've been through this before, as she mentioned, with the former gentleman who wanted to do pretty much the same type of stuff with huge things. So our suggestion is just they move it to the right some, as much as they can, to get it further away from our property line as possible. Pete, do you have anything to add?
No, that's it, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else out there in Zoom land?
Yes, I would like to make a statement, if that's okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Please identify yourself.
Okay, my name is James Henry Dunn. I'm the attorney who appears, whose name appears on the letter submitted by the Derbys for consideration of the zoning board of appeals. It should also be noted that my family is the neighboring property located at 91 Shore Road, where the end house on the other side of the Derby House at the corner of Rocky Point and Shore Road, the second home from 85 Shore Road, under, which is the property under consideration. And I'll just briefly state and support everything the Derbys have said on behalf of my family. We've been residing in 91 Shore Road since 1972. I'm here to state our family's absolute and unequivocal support of the position of the Derbys. Their objections to the proposed plan are reasonable, their objections to the proposed plan are consistent with existing code, and their exact objections to the proposed plan will ensure the quiet and peaceful enjoyment of their property as their family has enjoyed for all those generations. While the new owners propose arbividee as a barrier to help with the Derby's peaceful enjoyment, those arbividee will not mute sound. Setbacks from property lines are in place for a reason, to protect neighboring properties' quiet enjoyment. As Mr. Diorio and Mr. Derby stated, the property is a clean slate. With that said, there's absolutely no reason to accommodate the proposed violations of existing zoning, or any other, for that matter. And I echo Mr. Knight's statements, everything he has said. It is our hope that the ZBA recognizes the reasonable concerns of the Derbys to ensure that their interests are recognized. We also hope that their requests, consistent with existing Shelter Island zoning, are protected, and that the natural, scenic, and historic values and character of their property and the surrounding environment, including my family's property and the property Mr. Knight represents, are preserved. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to point out that the previous house that was on the property was hideous, it was three stories. You can go on Google or take a look at it.
You remember it?
We have a 100% improvement, and having a, a self-created hardship is not a reason for denial. And also, we've already addressed their issue of moving the five feet away. As for the other, Mr. Knight, I'm not sure, we'll have to look into that. We are trying to stay away from the wetlands, so we'll look into that, and-
So, you know, I'm going, I didn't realize that Mr. Knight had not sent a letter to the board, so I'm going to send forward his letters to, to the clerk, and she'll post them, correct?
No, I just send them to the applicant.
Okay.
I mean, I will, if whenever.
Yeah, you will, she's been very, yeah.
Okay, and that way, that way you'll, you can see the specifics of his-
Yes.
I have a question. The main part of the house is back 40 feet, it's just the front porch and-
The vestibule.
The vestibule.
Yeah, 460 square feet.
All right.
That's it.
I thought that's what you meant, I wanted to clarify that.
I do have another question about the vestibule. When you were developing these plans, did you look at alternative positions for the house that did not include having this vestibule within the setback?
I was not involved in that process, so I will, I'll ask.
Because even though it is mine, all right, there's a point where it is a blank slate, and you have, it's, it's, you know, a couple acre property, so-
Which I think could be subdivided, so then we could talk about it without having any, anything.
What's that?
I believe it could be subdivided.
I think tough road, road a hole there, but anything's possible.
We could have 2,000 square foot, you know?
No, you, yeah, you can, yeah.
I mean, it's just, it's a very large property, 4.6 acres.
Like the pond, the pond what really messes up the property.
Well, we have such a long space, everybody's wanting to move it south, so we're talking a side yard of 20 feet. So, you know.
But the, we could subdivide, whatever, it's, you know, it's, that's mitigation for the project that never happened, catastrophe again.
Yes, it's a clean site, but there are other alternatives.
Sure. None of which your client is interested in, I'm pretty certain.
Yeah, but we're trying to be, you know, work with the community of the neighbors and satisfy your requirements. And this is one out of three, you know?
All right, look, I, I would suggest that you do consider the input from the Derbys, which you were already willing to give up the one thing, and then also from Mr. Knight. You know, if you do twist the house just a little bit, I, I can see on the plan how that could alter it and, and get you to a spot where you need nothing from the ZBA.
Yes, no, I agree with you.
Would you like to have any other input on this this evening?
No, I just-
Okay, is there anybody out there in Zoom land that would like to have any other input here? Anybody here at the table?
I just had one other thing to add, listening to the applicants, thank you for hearing me one more time. And it seems to me a bit egregious when, as I said before, that the applicant can mention as a part of their original testimony, the questionnaire that's submitted together with the variance application materials, where it was mentioned that on such a large site, a site of such large acreage, that such a large and expensive home would be in fact commensurate with that, with the land that is being developed, suggesting in fact that perhaps a 10,000 square foot house would somehow be in keeping with its surroundings when sited on a seven acre parcel. And I found that to be a gross perversion in what I would describe as- a gross perversion in what I would describe as theoretical equality. And I, in my letter, listed the fact that on 45 acres, the Knight Family Trust owns and maintains a house of roughly 2,600 square feet. So the idea of having to put a large house, and maybe this testimony is better pointed during the hearing that may or may not occur with regarding the special permit for a house in excess of 6,000 square feet. But I found that argument in itself to be wholly reprehensible and, and not even sustainable in terms of logic. And so to me, it seems odd that the square footage being what it is, is what is being used as a predicate for the applicant's request for variance. And that's what I mean by it being wholly self-created. By just shrinking the structure a certain percentage, it's very easily done on AutoCAD, for example, at this stage in the preliminary design. I mentioned in my letter the fact that the living room alone is 39 feet by 39 feet in excess of 1,500 square feet. These excesses can easily be shrunk by a, a small percentage to allow the house to be more commensurate with the surroundings. And, you know, it's that, that commensurate, respectful siding that I think all of the neighbors are asking for.
I was forward to reading the letter. Yeah. And also, it is next to the Priglin Hotel, commercial. Yeah, it's not exactly.
Oh, look, I, we understand that there are businesses along that road.
Yes.
But this is not a business property. But we, we're not blind to that, you know, we had months of hearings on the Priglin renovation. So whatever, we're, we're pretty well in tune with, with, with the neighborhood. All right, so we're going to, we're going to close this, leave it open to correspondence until January 11th. Does everybody feel comfortable closing this? Yes? All right, so we're going to close it. Take it up again at the work session on the 18th of January. It's open to written correspondence up until the 11th of January. And Christina, I will send you those, the, the letter.
And we're going to get an updated.
And we're going to get an updated plan.
Updated plan, yes.
By January 11th.
And, and my client seriously heard the comments and when you just make this, we kind of wonder what the implications is.
Wouldn't that be awesome?
Sometimes we still have to.
And I'm sorry to interrupt again, but I just wanted to ask the board in terms of a procedural application, what, what is the procedure by which we communicate up until the January deadline? Does all communication have to go through the town clerk as what you've suggested?
From the, through the ZBA clerk.
Okay.
You can write to us, but the best way to have it so that it's, everybody's getting it, getting on the public record, the applicants understand what's, what, you know, what they're facing, is to send it to the ZBA clerk.
Okay, and I can find that on the town website.
Yes, sir. Right, you can find that right, right, right in, on our page, on our, on the town website, yes.
Okay, I'll make sure if there's any communication that I need to accomplish, that I'll do that through that, that mechanism. Thank you.
Thank you.
He has the background and then we want to do something that kind of fits everyone.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, thank for motion, motion to. We need, first we have, need the motion to close the hearing.
Oh, that's true.
So moved. I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, so we have to do a roll call on this. William Johnston?
Yes.
Thomas Graffanino? Lynn Colligan?
Yes.
Lisa Crackler?
Yes.
Phil Diorio votes yes also. Can I have a motion to close the meeting?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
49.